I'd like to call the meeting to order. We could stay and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Yeah, everybody. Do we have any visitors signed in, wishing to speak? Uh, any board committee updates? No? I guess we'll just jump right into the superintendent's report.
Okay, here we go. So first on the agenda is an update on Phase One of our capital project with our team from Turner, Young &amp; Wright, and we also have our director of facilities, Mr. Rampato, with us tonight to round out the crowd. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rashawn Sunubi. I'm going to kick this off, and then it's going to be Madeline's show. So, as the superintendent said, we're here for a quick update, just progress on design and construction where we are. So we'll start with introductions. I think you've met most of our team from the Young &amp; Wright architectural team and Turner Construction, but here today you have myself, Rashawn Sunubi, a partner with Young &amp; Wright Architectural, Madeline Murphy, who's the project manager at Turner, and Jim Hickie, who you all know. All right, we'll start with the capital project schedule. Just a quick update on where we are in all the phases. Phase One, as you guys currently know, is currently under construction. They're anticipating substantial completion on November 1st of this year. But Madeline's going to touch on sort of where we are, what we did this summer, some things, before and after pictures, things of that nature. Phase Two, we actually were able to submit the entire Phase Two project, which included the Turf Field, to SED in June of this year. We anticipated 16 weeks for SED's review. Unfortunately, because of their delays, they actually doubled that review time to 30 weeks, unfortunately, which is pushing our bid to March of 2025. We are anticipating that those review times are going to come down a little bit because, one, SED has already started. The architectural reviews have dropped from 28 weeks down to 14-week reviews. Engineering reviews are still high, about 26 weeks. But now that they're introducing third-party reviews back to the system, we're anticipating that those review times are going to come down tremendously. So we'll give you more of an update. Actually, I'm actually going out to Albany at the end of the month to do training for third-party reviews. So they're going to start that relatively soon. So I would say November, you're going to have architects doing third-party reviews, which are going to start to pull some of these projects out of the queue and allow projects that are currently backed up to be reviewed a little bit faster. And then Phase Three, we're going to be starting design conversations in the fall. All right, now Madeline's going to talk a little bit about Phase One and what she did so far.
So, big picture, everybody, you know, as Rashawn kind of talked about, we're currently in Phase One now for active construction. I have some just big-picture milestone dates on there that you can see. This is a repeat slide from our last presentation. Just kind of where are we right now? So you see an orange in bold on the right-hand side that we're in construction right now in basically the middle of that timeline. So, big picture of what was in Phase One again. This was kind of high-priority scope, but also work that could get in, be reviewed early, quickly, and get built fast to start generating A ratio, all that good stuff. So at Windermere, and as most of you may recall, for those of you who were part of our walkthroughs last week, what we have for scope work in this total building is up in the top right-hand corner there. So we are working on auditorium theatrical improvements, including the stage ringing, select classroom, bathroom, and millwork upgrades kind of in the little orange bubbles that you see throughout all of the building there, intrusion lock set upgrades for the classrooms, some select classroom mechanical upgrades, a pool filtration system upgrade for the filtration equipment, and some security cameras and exterior building lighting. So for what's complete, or as you heard Tony mention, substantially complete last week, is going to be the stuff that's in bold. So that's going to be our classroom, bathroom, and millwork upgrades, as well as those select classroom mechanical upgrades at this building. So I threw in a couple photos in there to kind of help remind us of what we started with and what we're, you know, kind of where we're at right now for the areas that are sort of at that 90-95% complete at this point. And then as far as fall goes, like I mentioned, we'll be continuing in the auditoriums to bring those theatrical upgrades into place. We'll be working our way through replacing those lock sets in the classrooms and getting those security upgrades on the exterior of the building finished up. For Smallwood, fairly similar scope of work here. You'll notice there's kind of a common theme between the two buildings, especially when you're, you know, talking classroom door hardware, theatrical upgrades, security, stuff like that. Couple nuanced differences. We do have a new bus loop over there, which was complete for the start of school, as well as some select corridor drinking fountain replacements and some hot water heater tank that has now become tanks, too, in the building. So kind of same thing, try to show a little bit of a before and after of where we started, where we finished for work that's in place right now. And then for work finishing up through this fall, again, same thing. We'll be finishing those auditorium upgrades, those classroom hardware swapouts, and our new tennis play courts that are over there that got relocated from the old spot to kind of that new northeast corner of the site. So big picture from a project standpoint, this is just a snapshot of Phase One of kind of where our financials stand. So as you recall, we landed at about $9.79 million for our construction bids, which include a base contract work plus alternate one, which was the mill and pave of the existing parking lot at the Smallwood site. And then you'll see the contingency for this. So it had recommended 7.5% of the overall budget. That rolls to be about $734,000. I am showing there just kind of how that contingency breaks down. So we do have actually a net credit back to the owner, as it stands right now, for executed change orders. Contingency allocated, so stuff that's pending, which would be problems that are understood and have a set value assigned to them and are maybe just waiting on signature or final approval for. That's kind of what you see there at $191. And then contingency unallocated, so truly money that is not touched or not earmarked at all at this point is $545,000. So that's obviously majority of where the contingency stands right now. And that's really healthy from where the budget stands for this phase, considering we're more than 50% complete as far as work goes and dollars spent to date. So with that, we do obviously carry incidental costs for this phase to kind of give you that grand total of project cost, what we would say, like an all-in number. And just kind of showing a comparable of where we stood from our original pre-rep budget to where funds stand now. Any questions?
So, I'm just trying to understand something.
Sure.
We're $545,000 unallocated on the contingency. But we're $2.9 million over, is that?
That's correct. So it would be, $2.9 million would be the overrun if all of that money was spent. So that number goes down if we can count on some of that unallocated money to come back to the budget.
So we're over 25% versus 29%?
I'm not sure I'm following your percentages.
Are we over or not?
You are over budget. You are over budget. Again, that's where worst-case scenario, so to say, would be the $2.9 million. But it can improve if a portion or potentially all of that unallocated fund comes back. We obviously do still have construction to get through. You know, we still have to finish the auditorium. So I would not be comfortable saying that that amount could come back now. But that'll be obviously something as we reconcile and move towards better cost reports that we would know that for future phases.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. In the revised timeline that you had up near the beginning of the presentation?
Yeah.
It looked like Phase Three changed dramatically from the previous slide to that slide.
So the biggest pieces that changed in Phase Three, one was the SED review times, which we're anticipating is going to be a lot, a lot, a lot longer. We did have to pull our, we're still trying to work out some things with Phase Two. So the design for Phase Two, I think we're supposed to start it in June, but we kicked it out through, to start in the fall instead of starting in June. And then we're anticipating that the construction is probably going to skinny up a little bit in terms of that. We're anticipating that it's going to, we're not going to need two summers for that.
Because we're dialing back the scope of Phase Three?
There's, we're working that out now, but there's a potential for that.
I guess that was my question, too, is like, how much is that overrun going to scale back from Phase Two and Three?
Yeah, so that's where, as we're still in the design process of Phase Two, we're working through the estimate process to understand kind of really where that impact lands. Especially, you know, one of the biggest impacts here is going to be that SED review to understand when we go out to bid, because that can obviously impact how good bid day numbers can be for contractors. So still in the process of studying that and understanding that and stuff that we're working through with the OACM team now, but that we should have a good picture to understand this fall.
So we'll have some impact, but we really don't know it, if that's the answer.
Well, it's already at 46%.
Yeah, there'll be a significant impact on the scope of Phase Three, you know, based on the estimates we've already received for Phase Two and decisions we need to make to make reductions to bring Phase Two into line with budget in addition to Phase One. So...
Is that something that will be presented with, like what's changing?
Yeah, the last time, the last time we talked about it, we brought the capital committee together, and the capital committee looked at some of the reductions we were already making in Phase Two, you know, and the impact that that was having on the anticipated local share for the project with our financial advisor, Rick Gancy. And then we agreed at that point that we were going to let Turner do their 90% estimate, and then we were going to bring the capital committee back after we have the 90% estimate and some sort of recommended adjustment to the scope based on the 90% estimate to get the committee's input on that and then move forward. The hard part is we don't have designs or plans for Phase Three, so then it's hard for us to get estimates on Phase Three to know how much the overage there is. But at this point, with a 90% estimate of Phase Two, we're having to borrow so much from Phase Three just to deliver on what we promised the taxpayers for Phase Two, that Phase Three may end up having to be a future project down the road.
What was, what was the primary, what was happening in Phase Three? I don't remember what the...
High school odd, high school gym and locker rooms, secure entry at the high school. I think it was primarily focused on the high school.
Yeah, all high schools.
Yeah. Oh, and the heating system except the high school. Those were, I think, the main items. So, yeah.
So after the capital committee meets then and reviews all that and makes those decisions, that'll be presented to the board?
Yeah, I mean, we don't know yet at this point, because the last time we met with the capital committee, we had two objectives that we were looking at. One was, you know, borrowing, and there was that whole, there's always the question of band versus bond. So we looked at financial pieces of doing a band for Phase One. And then for Phase Two, we anticipated that there was going to be overage, and we had made a lot of reductions in Phase Two. And then the next step was Turner needed to take what we had scaled back and then do the 90% estimate. And they brought that back to our OACM team, which is our owner, architect, construction management team. And if there's an overage there at this point, anticipated, so we started looking at more reductions. You know, things like, can this sidewalk stop here so we could save money here? Is this parking lot over here needed? You know, we're not, we're trying to preserve the scope without reducing big chunks of it. And we did that. So they need to update their estimates based on that. And then once we have some solid numbers on Phase Two, we want to bring it to the capital committee to get input. And then if we get to a point where we have to make really hard decisions on Phase Three, which I think we're going to be, then we'll have to determine the next steps after that. But as we've been doing with the project at this point, we've kind of been following it by phase. So the team gave us an update in the spring on the anticipated Phase One construction. You know, then construction played out, and now they're giving us an update on how the construction played out. So we should have a Phase Two update at some point in the 2025. And then Phase Three would follow. Unfortunately, there's not enough known yet at this point to give concrete answers because we're waiting on a lot still for Phase Two. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Well, so last week and today, we were pleased to welcome back our students and staff for the new school year. So I just wanted to provide you with a brief update on how that went over our opening day, staff and students. So on Tuesday, we welcomed back staff to the buildings for three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They had building-based faculty meetings, technology distribution, online mandatory training, thanks to Mike and his team. And a portion of the day was used for classroom setup. Due to the construction schedule for the summer at our elementary schools, we told people that they weren't allowed in the buildings over the summer, which we did a lot of activity in the summer. There's people that come in quite often to make sure their rooms are nice and set up for the students' arrival. So that caused a level of anxiety for some folks. But we made sure during the three days that we had, we allocated additional classroom prep time for them so they could feel prepared for the students' arrival today. Wednesday, August 28th, was our whole district welcome back that was led by Mr. Belayo and Mrs. McWofflin in mine and President Stein with absence. I unfortunately came down with a flu bug, and Paul was moving his son into law school in New York City. So I thank both of them for welcoming back our faculty and staff briefly in the morning. And the highlight of that is always our opportunity to recognize our long-term service awards. So this year, and it could be possibly the first time ever, we had a 45-year service awardee, our service award honoree, and Judy Gerson, who works at our Windermere Boulevard Elementary School. And I'm told that she received a standing ovation for her recognition, which is very touching because she certainly is part of the fabric of Windermere Boulevard Elementary, and she loves the building as much as she has loved in the building. We were able to also honor 35-year service honorees, Mr. Steelberger and Mr. Duran. 30-year service honorees from all of our buildings in addition to 25 service award honorees from all four buildings, including Mr. Belayo, who recognized himself.
She actually got to say it, so it wouldn't sound weird.
Get a seamless transition.
Yes. So that's always one of the highlights of our opening days. And we also had to throw in there some of the mandated stuff. So Mike was able to update everybody on the online mandated training. This year, he made the training available to folks as early as July 1st. So many people got that out of the way during the summer because it afforded them more classroom prep time if they didn't need time during opening days to get their mandated training done. On Thursday, we had staff members engaged in all different kinds of professional development. So as you're aware, with our mental health first aid grant, all employees need to be trained in mental health first aid or youth mental health first aid. People who had not previously been trained, and Lynn and her team offered several opportunities for people to be trained last year and over the summer. But if people weren't able to take the training to this point, this was kind of the last stop where everybody who hadn't been trained yet needed to be trained. So we had youth mental health first aid training. But for those that had completed that training, they also offer additional classroom setup time for our elementary folks. Again, we kept them out of the building, which was very nerve-wracking for some during the summer. And then we had PD sessions on technology in addition to instructional topics. And per a request, there was also some social-emotional well-being PD that was requested for the social-emotional well-being of our staff. So we were able to offer things like pottery, healthy cooking, neurographic watercolor painting, among other things to the schedule. So that was nice.
Describe what neurographic watercolor is.
Nope, don't ask me. Nope, you've already used your last question tonight. So, the, do you know what it means?
I did see the majority of it. They did, they, you deal with some emotions, right? And you select some emotions that you're feeling, and then they integrate that in with arts, and they explore it with color and line. And it was actually extremely interesting. I can have that come, give me the...
I think Mr. Penau might want to experience that directly.
They were very, they felt very good after they left.
I will try and get in to that class and give you an update at my student center's convenience. So we welcome students back today, which is always the highlight of the, of the school year, the summer, all that hard work and preparation for today. Just one quick note prior to today. Mrs. Pasquale and Mrs. Holler at Windermere offered a popsicles with the principals, which is something that I think took place on Saturday, August 24th. And it was basically a meet-and-greet of sorts where people could come and meet the new principal and come and introduce themselves. As you can see, they also did read a few books to the kids that were in attendance with their families. I think we had over 100 people show up. So it was well-attended. And Mrs. Pasquale said that it's something she had done in her previous district, and it's something that she would like to do every summer, you know, as a way to start kicking off the new school year. So that was something notable to highlight. We also had, you know, supply drop-off and open house at our elementary schools. Our high school pathfinders and leadership teams leading our orientation for our ninth graders, as well as our web leaders leading orientation for our sixth graders, making sure that their lockers get set up and they can find all their classes, and they can navigate the middle school. It's always a big transition for our sixth graders. And then during our board walkthrough was also the time that the athletics kickoff was taking place last week, Thursday. So a lot of activity. Some good news to share. We were approached, Mrs. Sosenko was approached by Channel Four wondering if they could be onsite at Smallwood today to do some live back-to-school stories in the morning. In addition, they're also doing, and they requested, some back-to-school shout-outs from faculty and staff. So we shared that request with the principals, who pushed it out to the faculty and staff. So I have a few clips that I can show you. We had one back-to-school shout-out that already aired today on Channel Four. It was Mrs. Mazurik from Channel, from Windermere.
For first-class educators in our area to welcome back messages for their students ahead of the new school year. Here's one of those messages.
Hi, everybody, I'm Mrs. Mazurik. I teach fifth grade at Windermere Elementary School in Amherst. We are so excited to invite back our students to the 2024-25 school year. We can't wait to see you. Go Tigers!
So that one was ready to air because...
Is this matter to check?
is friends with one of the Channel Four anchors. So that request went to her directly, and she did it ahead of time. And then the other shout-outs, I'm told, are supposed to be aired here up this weekend. And that's, we have a spattering here of some that were submitted by our staff that chose to participate.
This is Mrs. Comston, second-grade teacher at Smallwood Drive School in Amherst, New York. And I'm so excited to welcome all of my new friends this school year. See you soon!
Hi, I'm Mrs. Hubberts.
And I'm Mrs. Close. We are from Smallwood Drive Elementary School in Amherst.
We teach kindergarten, and we would like to say, "Welcome back!" Have a great school year!
Have a great year!
Hi, my name is Mrs. DiCarlo, and I teach kindergarten first and second grade at Windermere Boulevard School in Amherst. I can't wait to see all my old and new friends as we start an exciting new school year. See you soon!
Hi, I'm Kelly Rup, and I'm a career and life skills teacher at Amherst Middle School. We are excited for the new Tigers coming in for this school year.
Hi, this is Mr. O'Donnell from Amherst Middle School. I can't wait to welcome my orchestra students back and fill this room with music once again. See you soon!
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mr. Longzak, principal of Amherst Middle School, and I would like to welcome all of our incoming Amherst Tigers to another successful school year at AMS. Go Tigers!
So in voluntary, and the request went out, we had some takers. So hopefully they all get aired during their back-to-school coverage on Channel Four. And then we also...
Hi, everybody. This is Mrs. Comston, second-grade teacher at Smallwood Drive School in Amherst, New York.
And then some of the segments that were live this morning were also recorded to be played at 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock hour on Channel Four. So we were able to get some video footage of that. That I'll share with you here.
Includes younger Tigers at Smallwood Drive Element entry.
Principal Richard Crozier joins us live to share how they're welcoming students on the first day. Richard, thanks for joining us this morning. What would you say your messages to students and parents on this very important first day of school?
We're just, we're just so excited to have the kids back. So my message is that today should be a celebration. Schools are a wonderful place to go, and today we're just going to welcome everyone. And we definitely understand that there's lots of emotions in the first day. It's tough, it's hard to get back to your routine, but we are, we're going to welcome your kids with open arms and make this day really special for them.
What are some ways that you kind of ease into things? You know, the first day is not, you know, intense classwork right off the bat. You know, it is kind of a process, right?
Well, Scott, it's interesting. Last year, a bunch of students came to myself and some of my teacher leaders and said, "Mr. Crozier, we need to make the first day more of a celebration." So believe it or not, this morning, we're going to have an assembly outside on our blacktop. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony where we welcome the school year with open arms and have excitement, some speeches, some music. We really want to make today a celebration. So we're not only kind of easing into it, we're making today a really memorable day for our kids.
Sounds really exciting. We really appreciate you joining us this morning, wishing all the kiddos and your staff the best of luck this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In case you didn't notice, Rich was in the small...
I'm so wasting no time today.
My mom's... I love it. It's your piece.
I did like it.
Okay, hold on. Wait a second. This thing is touchy. You make it easy up here.
It is touchy.
I couldn't, I couldn't get through my mandated training.
I know, I double-clicked. Clicked once, it went three.
I had to log in a few minutes.
Thank you. The Amherst Tigers are also heading back to school today. That includes younger Tigers at Smallwood Drive... at Smallwood Drive Elementary.
Assistant Principal Katie Marzaki is joining us live to talk about how they're welcoming students. Katie, thank you for joining us this morning. So talk to us about what you have going on there.
Construction. What we have going on here? Well, hi, Alien Scott. It is certainly an exciting first day for us here at Smallwood, welcoming our newest Tigers into the building for free-day students and our kindergarten students all the way to our fifth-grade students.